This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
January 4th, 2023. Planning Board meeting, town of Southampton. So let me just reiterate to the public and those watching. Joy's not here just yet, she'll probably join in, but. Ken Comey from PVPC sent over. The. Two bylaws he was working on. The DOTA. Contract that we had this past year. Accessory apartments and multifamily dwellings. I don't know if anybody got a chance to look at them. I just quickly glanced at the accessory apartment. Now. Correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, but I mean, he, he left the existing language. In the. His, his copy because I, I noticed on F about the square footage, no greater than 600 square feet. I could have sworn we were discussing, you know, 900, 1,000, 1,200 or something like that. So did he not change the language and that's up to us?
And then we need to look at what the Enabling Act. Provide specifies too. There may be a reason that they left it 600. You want to look at what the State Enabling Act on accessory apartments does.
That's because that's the old one. I know it is.
I also have issued that. Until you get to. 27590. On bottom part of second page, you don't know that this is a temporary accessory apartment permit. It's temporary as. Long as the owner owns it and. Resides there. It, which raises questions as the viability of it because who is going to invest? In. Making renovations for a accessory apartment. Putting additional parking spaces, applying for special permit if it's only a temporary.
Yeah, because you'd want it, you want it in perpetuity, correct?
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, that's, and I understand the issue of owner occupancy and, and that's always been one of my big issues of. Accessory apartment bylaws that require owner occupancy of one of the units is enforceability of that because eventually somebody dies. But you can still have that and still not make it a temporary, but just have it. Before transfers, it's got to be approved by the planning board. But not, but if you're going to make it temporary, it needs to stay right up front. That's a temporary accessory apartment. Don't bury it somewhere. That's my take on it. And. Yeah. And if it's going, if that's the intent to do, then I would label it temporary accessory apartment. I would right up front define. Accessory apartment as being a temporary. And then explain what that is, if that's what the board's inclination is. Because I don't think anybody should be go through and then find out the very, oh, I'm going to use it as long as I own it.
Right.
It's typically when you have a special permit that somebody has to invest real money to effectuate. That becomes a permanent use.
So yeah, because, yeah, because you've drawn up the, the owner of the property, you've drawn up a lease for that apartment. And if the property owner changes hands, then it would have to be in the deed as perpetuity because you can't. You can't just because the guy sells a property, kick him out. They've got to have a lease.
And more importantly, that. A owner invests money, real money to make the renovations necessary to make that accessory apartment. Where it's attached, detached and. That doesn't come cheap. And I had renovations done in my condo and. Renovation of my bathroom was like 15,000. Now you could do it for less, but it's. It's still real money. To build, to build a red bathroom, build a kitchen, even a small one.
Did you have any, I mean, we're going to cover this again, but Cindy or Paul or Dan have any?
I'm sorry, I did not, I didn't have a chance to look at it, so I don't have any comments right now.
So when we. This is his work, so we just have to go back and. Edit this, correct?
Correct.
Right.
And I would suggest you do it in a meeting with Ken so we can get his input as to.
Right.
Our issues and thoughts on it.
I have more of an educational question. So I assume with, with normal apartments in town that. So assuming with, with equivalent to. Regular apartments in town, there's some type of inspection cycle they have to go through. Maybe it's like yearly or every other year. So I just wanted to ensure. Do the same type of things apply to accessory apartments?
It should. We'd have looked at the bylaw is regarding the inspections. Yes.
Yeah, because we, maybe we can just refer to apart, the same thing for apartments, not to have it into places.
All right. Any other comments, Richard, before I move on?
No.
Okay, so we'll cover this again with Ken and when we actually. I think the major thing that was done with multifamily was. Cleaning up the table abuse regulations. And then some of the language there. So again, we'll cover it, study this and make notes. So when the time comes, we'll. Hammer it out and get that ready to, to go. Joy, thank you for joining us.
Hi. Go ahead.
No, go.
Do we know when we'll be meeting with Ken again?
I've got to set it up with him because officially his contract ended with this, but.
Okay.
He's, he's always available and. I've got to now figure out because he was double booked. Usually he was only available for this meeting and not the second one of the month, but. Once I figure that out, but. I want you to present that, your request to bring up. The new. Mass law that took.
Yeah, I haven't, I've tried to do a little bit of research on it, but I need to connect with. Janet on where, on what webinar she had seen to see if I can, if they had recorded it so I can access it, but. The legislature passed MGL Chapter 40Y, which includes starter home districts. And she, we basically, the housing district wanted to discuss whether. Or with planning board, if that's something that they would be interested in, in looking at. So I don't know if that's a conversation, planning board wants to have just amongst you guys with more information or like a presentation on it. Which I would need to talk to Janet about putting together or something that. Ken would have more information on. So I did want to, want to, you know, start that topic with planning board.
Yeah, I forwarded that to Richard and you had a chance to look at it, Richard. You had some, some comments to make, but yeah, I don't have any problems about. Maybe doing a joint meeting or whatever with, with the housing authority on it, but Richard had some good points to bring up on that.
The thing, one first things, we might want to have, I know PV, PVPC will be soliciting a DOTA request. This year and one of the issues regarding this particular 40Y. Is all the places in Southampton or what other place in Southampton where you could do. Single family homes on essentially 12,000 square foot lots. One quarter acre lots. Because that is the requirement in 40Y is at least four units per acre. Inclusive of the open space. So now you can't, can't carve out open space. So we still have 4,000. As, as I read it, you have to have that four units per acre, including the open space. And we also need to see what are the rules and regulations that DHCD is going to promulgate. For administration of it. Those are two critical items that I think we might want to consider. Requesting as part of DOTA request for PVPC, take a look at and identify areas of Southampton that would be. Potentially suitable for.
So the, the DOTA request is available now. It's out there.
It is.
To Chris Fowles. Have you not seen?
I haven't received it yet, but I've got to check the mailbox. Perhaps it's in there.
Okay. I, I got that from Chris Fowles, the select board chair, that it's out there. She wondered if. Anybody knew of any projects that we might apply for, you know, planning board being one of the up, you know, organizations that can apply for a DOTA. But the second thing, I'm going to ask a question, Richard. This whole question of putting single family homes on smaller lots has come up several times. And I think it was Ryan Gilaher that, maybe he's correct or not, I don't know, said. The problem is enough space for the. Septic system.
That, that's the reason I think it'd be essential to have PVPC to evaluate, identify areas of Southampton that. Would meet the minimum requirements. From a infrastructure perspective. I think we've had the same question regarding multifamily and. I think we all, or that all into one request, DOTA request that could be submitted this year.
What, what do you mean by that? Because it's, it's just a function of lot size and the fact of matter. You have a septic system that, that, that is relatively. It takes up a decent amount of footprint and I don't know how that. Would need to be looked at by someone else that. From a, from a PVP, PVPC standpoint, given that it's a function of, you know, if you need 5,000 square feet for a. Leaching basin, that doesn't leave you enough. To be for a septic system, that doesn't leave you enough for the remainder of the lot. So I'm not sure how, how you would. You need to hear anymore on that.
The, the, as that board decided this, if they want, look, there's other issues that have been looked into, what's, what qualifies for start a home in terms of locational. Aspects on 40Y and again, under whatever DHCD comes up with their rules and regulations. And when not, there's any, any room to, within the legislation, I didn't see it to accommodate. Septic system areas.
Could you, could we increase the lot size? Say, what did you say? 12,000 square feet?
It's, it's four units per acre.
But I mean, can you have, do you have to have four units per acre or up?
That's the minimum under the 40Y.
The minimum?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Inclusive of the septic systems.
Including, including all open space.
And open space, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty tight. One thing I, one thing I requested of the water department, I, I thought it might be interesting to have. And I've got to go pick it up from Mark Reed because he was good enough to have it printed out, but. Water department has, I wanted to see a map of where the town water. Was in town. I know it's not everywhere, but I wanted to know for future reference with zoning if. We knew where town water was, or it might make it easier to maybe figure out. Some of these areas for affordable housing with smaller lots or whatever, but. Yeah, when you, when you, when you don't have sewer, it really, it really complicates the issue here.
And whether, or the community septic system would be a viable option, I don't know.
That's, that's a, it's funny. I had a conversation today about somebody regarding community system.
Expensive.
Very expensive. Apparently from what I'm hearing in the town. In our town, the type of system we're requiring for multi-units. Appears to be cross cost prohibitive from a, from an economic standpoint, particularly if you're doing a. A, a, a multi-unit development system that, that has, you know, 60, 70 units or whatever. You're talking about a system that exceeds a million dollars in cost. And my dogs won't shut up here. Hold on.
I, I think the important, one thing to know is. It seems like every time we have this conversation, we always get back to the septic. As one of the, the barriers in this town. So just want, just want to point that out. It's obvious. I'm sure to everybody, but.
I'm wondering. You know, it's, it's a great concept. Joy and. Folks, I don't, I don't disagree with it, but when you're limited the way we are. I'm wondering if we have to approach it from a standpoint of maybe lowering lot size averages. For just. Single family homes that way. Pre-manufactured homes, I mean. Stuff like that, that, that might qualify. Because we don't have sewer.
There is a fine incentive as part of the 40Y program. And that's the reason I think you should, if, if there's any option, you should support. Under the 40R program, if you have 40R district designated, you get incentive payments. Way I read the legislation, the 40Y has a similar type incentive payment that when you create it. You, you can get incentive payment based from number units that could be created, which then goes to town to use. Based on how they deem appropriate.
Can I ask a question? So I understand this, right? Would the town get the money just for creating the district, even if it were. Say not possible to build in this district?
Well, you, you're not going to be able to create this in. In front of the Bible.
Because, yeah.
You have to submit application to DHCD and they're going to have to approve. The bylaw and.
Yeah, that you can fit the house in the, the open space on lot.
And just like 40R program, you had demonstrate. That you comply with it and they had to certify it. So now again, I go back to one of the points is. DCD is going to be empowered to promulgate rules and regulations. And obviously they haven't had a chance to do that yet to my knowledge and they usually take some while to do it. So that's going to be critical as well. How they address, because they're going to be asked, how do you address septic tank communities? And they're going to have to come up something in the rules and regulations. To make it, hopefully make it viable.
So this is just a matter of waiting until they've had a chance to think through those?
One, me too. I can contact person DHCD that. I anticipate it's going to be the one that, that runs the program.
I would, I would ask through Paul for permission to you to do so. One, just, just in case they don't, it, it doesn't come across on their agenda. And two, maybe they have a, they have a answer already and we're just not aware of it.
So I'm expecting the 40R folks will be managing the 40Y program and. We, we've worked with them quite a bit in South Adelaide.
I'm assuming, Joy, that this is so new that no, no town or city has adopted it yet or taken a.
That was Janet's understanding, yes. And it sounds like we still need some more answers from. DHCD, so.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, it's infrastructure again that's. That's smacked us in the face once again.
Um, you know, it is infrastructure again. We hear this over and over and over again. Richard, are you aware of any state grants that we could be looking at to. Address this major interest, infrastructure issue? We do not have. Any sort of town wastewater system. Is there any way we could, I mean, it's multi, multi millions of dollars, let's face it, but. It is hindering some of these important projects.
I'm not, I'm not aware of any grants that would fund, we have fund essential startup sewer system. I think your, the best option be is, for instance, if you have an area that could tie into East Hampton sewer. And you had a mass works project, maybe get sewer line to extend that, but. There's not any. To manage, there's not any grant program out there that's going. Give you millions and millions of dollars to. Establish a Santos sewer system.
Yeah, to, to build off that, I mean, Low hanging fruit is the. Is the, is the city of East Hampton, right? They have capacity, they have a parallel system that actually goes down on the bike path. That goes to Coleman Road. It's probably a, probably like a thousand feet short of Coleman, but. I was actually talking to the city engineer about that. He said, that's the only spot that's available. For Southampton to connect to. So. If there was a development that was off of Coleman or someone willing to pay for that type of. System or potentially one. Option that's out there is mass works funding. However, with mass works, you need to somewhat have a leveraged private development. That is not only going to bring housing, but also check the box off for potential job creation that mass, mass works can use as a, as a. As a. Project that meets its goals. So, you know, for that matter, you're very limited with what we have here.
And, and they don't, Mass Works doesn't want. A possible job creation, possible private development. They want committed private development, I mean. As much as you can get a commitment. We had two mass works projects in South Adelaide and. The last one was a huge one, it's like 2.7 million and. Is based largely upon a. 40R residential development occurring and they, that developer is still trying to get the funding necessary. To implement the housing and Mass Works is not happy with the town right now because the development hasn't occurred and the. Commercial development has been waiting for the housing development. To go forward because of the site. The site management issues, if they did the commercial development first. So, so you really didn't even try, and having a start a home district that would benefit from it. Could be a leverage with Mass Works, but you're still going to have to have some type of private development that's going in there. Preferably some type of job creation development that would go in there.
But what is the town you were mentioning, Richard, that Mass Works not, is not happy with? I didn't catch the name of the town.
South Adelaide.
Oh, South Adelaide. Yeah, wow.
The, the, honestly, they keep asking, where's the private investment that you said is going to happen?
Not only that, but. Lot of times right now, so I was part of a funding call with Mass Works. Last year or two years ago for a project out east and. This community applied for a Mass Works. Grant. They had a developer that owned a, a very reputable. Housing developer that also did mixed use. Apply on behalf of the town for a grant in this one community. They didn't get it and the feedback that. The community got from, from Mass Works was the full commitment and financial commitment. From the developer that say thou, that he or she will be committing. This corporation will be providing. $600 million in, in residential and mixed use development in this one area that. They didn't commit to. So they want to see some hard cold commitments before they. Give cash.
Especially if you're talking about sustaining a sewer line, which is a pretty expensive proposition.
Now, there are other, there are other components that might. Fall in, so. I think the program, Mass Works program, I think now it's called like one stop or something like that, but.
It's part of one stop.
Right, but in the old days, they used to have what? The small communities, the small rural communities. What was that part called, Rich? Do you remember?
They had P-Wed and then that became Mass Works and, yeah.
But they had like the rural community aspect too, that we would kind of fall into, I thought, but.
Last I checked, they still do, but it's. It's not as clear cut as it was before.
Right. And then here's the other thing. So, and I don't know what the current administration has, but the pre, previous administration until yesterday. Their policy was to. Get the DOT involved to, to give their feedback on the. Benefit of an infrastructure improvement, meaning that if, if DOT side as a need for infrastructure improvement, then. That would. Weight the application to a higher level, given the project need. So the problem with that is, I'm not saying it's a problem, but the. Problem, perceived problem to some is, is that it weighs the infrastructure, roadway, street level. Projects heavier than the. Sewer or water or other types.
And. My experience has been the two, two grants we got in South Adelaide, each one. Took at least three application cycles before it got approved. It's, it's, it's rare that you get a Mass Works funded on fir, first round. Just, it's very competitive program.
Well, thank you for that information, fellas.
You also need a significant amount of political push.
Yeah, it helps. It helps a lot.
That Rich failed, did imagine.
So for all intents and purposes, Joy, I think this is going to have to go under some further study and. We fill out that DOTA, maybe we can incorporate in that. I, I doubt seriously the. The starter home thing. Is going to work for Southampton, but again, we can maybe figure out other ways with smaller lot sizes in certain areas of town.
Richard, let me, let me contact the folks at DHCD. And see what their take is on the 40Y in, in regards to septic tank dependent communities.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have much else here. I've got. Sent a notice out to Ed Gibson. About the board vacancy. He tells me that anybody interested in filling the. Unexpired term of Sarah, it has to. Provide. A cover letter. With their intentions. I'm not quite sure if there's an application that follows it, but they have to apply personally. There's one. Person interested in Dan, how is. Your friend, is he still interested or?
Yeah, I mean, he's still interested, but I think he has a lot of commitments, like tonight I was, I asked him, hey, are you coming? And he's like, I have to do. He's refere, refereeing a hockey game, so I don't know if it's going to fit for his current. Time that he has available, so it's up to him.
Well, I informed the other interested party that they would have to submit the. Well, I informed the other interested party that they would have to uh, submit the letter to Ed and copy the select board on it and I'm assuming, I don't know what our involvement is, if we have to endorse it, but uh, that's where the process um, begins.
Um, so, uh, one of the new bylaws that the bylaw committee has been working on, hasn't gone before town meeting or public hearing yet, but it has to do with boards and committees' involvements with creating, you know, with supporting, getting people on and um, it's not past yet, Paul, but I do think that, you know, h- having a committee particularly endorse a candidate at some point will help the select board because you're talking about an interim appointment for the board, not an elected person, right? And um, I did hear Ed speak regarding the Public Safety Building Committee and the fact that there was, and actually you might have seen it, the select board last night, they did appoint somebody to, to fill Sarah's spot on that committee. But um, it is exactly what he said. He wants a cover letter and an application. The application is on the website, on the town website. And for a while, I guess, application alone was fine, but now they're looking for more of an explanation as to why an individual feels qualified or has it, has an interest in um, being appointed to a particular vacancy. Um, I hope I got that right from Ed, but that was my understanding. Um, and I think I mentioned the person who uh, moved into Sarah's house. It's a, a woman. She's um, she formerly worked for, if I have her in my head correctly, she formerly worked for the uh, for the state or the federal government in um, areas that would be consistent with what might be a benefit to the planning board. I emailed her or texted her right before this meeting and said, you know, tonight's the meeting, can I give you the Zoom? Link, uh, she wasn't available tonight, so I've asked her, are you really still interested? So, I'm not saying she is, but she sort of was mentioning to me that she might be interested. She wants to get involved in town things. Um, so there's another potential candidate.
Very good. Um, Richard, do you have anything before we let you go? Richard? No. Um. So depending on what comes before us here, um, I checked that DLTA uh, application out, but I would appreciate maybe if you could uh,
I'll reach out to Ken in CFN, tell him what they, what they, what the solicitation is.
Yeah. See what might fit going forward, especially with the housing end of it.
And I know from prior experience with them, um, if you're doing a T, a DOTA that will build upon the previous work, they'd really like that.
That's good. All right, thank you, and I'll be in touch. Um, and then I'll need a schedule from, from you about when we should start. Not only cleaning up some of the zoning, the multifamily and the accessory apartments, but some of the other work we've done to get it ready for public hearings, so we can get, get a schedule going forward uh, so for town meetings.
The big question is, where does General Code Corporation stand with the E code? That's the big question.
I'll reach out to uh, is it Rebecca? I can't remember her name, but I'll, I'll reach out to uh, Deb Tzinski, that's what it is. I'll reach out to Deb and see what the status of that is.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Welcome. Good night.
Good night, happy new year. Uh. Committee reports, anybody have anything, Cindy or, or Dan?
Um, well, go ahead, Cindy. I have something.
You sure? Jump in, Dan. You sure?
You first.
So, um, I'm not representing the planning board on the Public Safety Building Committee, but I will say that um, uh, we're looking to review, and I couldn't tell you how many have submitted applications to uh, complete the feasibility study. We're meeting on Monday. Um, actually, I'm on that committee as a senior, um, representing seniors in town. So, uh, hopefully we'll have that thing move along and it, and I maybe have mentioned this before, there's really good coordination between the Public Safety Building Committee and the council, I mean, the Senior Center Feasibility ad hoc committee, um, and Rini Groden is on both committees, so she's excellent at communicating what's going on with either one. Some of the same properties are of interest to both groups. Um, some are not, um, lots and lots and lots of questions. So, so that's, it's moving along. It's a very complex situation. Um, a lot of money will be involved ultimately, but that's what's going on on that. Uh, the Open Space Committee is doing a big project with Kestrel Land Trust and uh, we're looking at um, applying for a landscape partnership rent, which would be, um, Kestrel will be the lead writer on that, thank goodness. Uh, and we're um, looking at, and the original guidelines for that were altered this year, thank goodness. One of them was minimum acreage of contiguous property for conservation was 500 acres minimum. It's changed to 250, which is good, although there's upwards to over 800 acres of um, under, undeveloped forested land, up mostly in the northeast, excuse me, the northwest part of our town, that really is um, potentially uh, could be conserved within the guidelines. Um, the second part of it is, the deadline for the filing of that grant, Landscape Partnership Grant was originally May, that's moved up to April. A-again, I repeat, Kestrel's going to be the writer on it, so that's actually good news. So, we're really kind of moving this spring on a, on a number of things on that. I represent planning board on CPC. There has not been a lot of meetings recently, um, since the uh, special town meeting on CPC. Um, Master Plan Implementation Committee has been in a hold, so there isn't anything to report there. And um, trying to think what else. I don't think there's anything else that I can offer you right now, but.
You have lots of, you have lots of hats, Cindy.
A little too many um, stuff, hats. I, I'm going to work hard to uh, de-hat myself a little teeny bit if I can. Hair, the white hair.
Well, that's good. We thank you for your involvement.
Well, you know, and you know, you've seen it in the, in the news, the town was awarded or it was able to sign the um, acquisition and, and acquire the rail bread bed property from Coleman Road all the way down to the other side of Sheldon's, stops at Route 10. Um, and that's extremely exciting to know that the town is, you know, owning, is it owning? I hope it's owning, yes, owning the land. The development of the rail trail uh, will be you, a, a different source of state money will be coming through. Joy, jump in if I got the dates wrong on this. Is it like 24 or 25 that that state money is going to come through? I can't remember, uh, but it's not this coming year. It's, it's, it's going to happen in our lifetime though, that, that's kind of exciting. I think, unless something happens.
That'd be nice.
I don't recall with the year. Sorry, Cindy.
You don't recall either? Well, it's a couple of years from now. And I think Paul Demon is a bicyclist. Am I right about that? Did I see you on a bike one day with a, you know, with your, all your gear on? Was that not you? Somebody said, hi Cindy, and I said, hi Paul, and the person kept driving, riding away. I thought it was you. Somebody else.
Haven't ridden a bike in years.
Well, then I guess it was not you. Anyway, that's the news.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome. Thank you, Paul.
Dan?
Yeah, the thing I wanted to discuss for the planning board is, uh, as you know, I'm on the ad hoc technology committee, ad hoc technology committee and we, at, at two town meetings ago, we had asked to, to bring to vote uh, the MLP or municipal light plant, which would eventually allow the town to start serving uh, internet via fiber. And i- in the meantime, we have met with the surrounding uh, um, communities that do this sort of thing, like Whip City Fiber, uh, Sonic Net, uh, Holyoke Gas and Electric, uh, the, the, our neighbors basically. And I, I was thinking this week that part of this decision, I think, needs the planning board to be involved, right? Uh, we want, we want technical, techno, we have a, we have a technical committee who knows all about the technology, but there's also this, this, this component of the planning of the rollout of this fiber optic network in our town. And I'm not sure how the two tied to, how we tie the two together, but, but I think they, there should be some connection, you know?
I, it's a little over my head. Uh, I don't know how we, we would be of service if, it um, I'm not, I'm not adverse to it, but I'd like to know what role you'd like us to play in it.
So here, what I was thinking was, we have uh, say, three or four um, possible candidates. And they all, well, was it, I say, majority of them are, are neighboring communities such, such as Holyoke, gas and electric, for example. And, and they could immediately roll out to some houses that are on the border of Holyoke, right? So, I think the part that the planning board could do to help would be to decide helping determining that, that rollout plan and which parts of town we'd want to start to try to serve first.
So how does this, so what jurisdictional what jurisdictional uh, rights does the planning board have? Because you're dealing with public pri, property. You're also dealing with privately owned utility poles. Obviously, that the town is established as a municipal light company, which gives it right to be on there, but this is more of a, a turney cost benefit analysis that needs to be um, weighed with respect to what's, what's, what's the best uh, alternative for the city, or for uh, for Southampton.
Yep, I totally agree with you and, and that's why I was, I was kind of thinking also this week that, hey, maybe this is an opportunity for a DLTA grant, but I think we may have already figured out how we'd want to, to use those funds in town, but um, just bringing up as a suggestion of another way we could possibly use uh, their help in terms of determining that, that overall uh, long-term rollout plan and what, which helps us to determine which company is the which, which town or company is best to go, to partner with.
So who's leading this charge?
Uh, well, the ad hoc technology committee is leading the charge.
Doesn't it, doesn't it ultimately end up with the select board to
Yes, we
to select the contractor?
Yep, as an ad hoc committee, we cannot in, make any formal decisions, so we're, we're just, are an advisory group to the, to the select board. So you are correct, yeah. It's, it ultimately lies with the select board.
So, the select board is expecting what from the ad, from the ad hoc committee?
So, they want to understand what a recommendation as to which technical uh, solution is most feasible, is the be, best performance, uh, has the best criteria for the town. I think they, they also would like to understand, you know, how, how this could, where it gets into, well, there's more, a lot more than just the tech behind it. Figuring out the, the rollout plan and, and how, how we uh, we, would go about those, those types of things. So, there's more, more than just technology that goes into this decision, so. It can be done, yeah.
I was going to say, Dan, I see the place of the planning board, at least just having an opinion. It, we're not the decision makers, we don't have the authority for that, but what we don't, I'm not getting from you, is specific questions, you know, if it's like, where do we start? Like, do we start on the south end of town? Do we start on the north end of town? It seems to me there's a lot of factors such as what is the most attractive partnering company? Why would we choose the Westfield Partnering Company versus another partnering company?
Yep.
Uh, it, it seems to me like a lot more details would have to be available to us, like a, it's sort of like a presentation and then that would give the planning board an opportunity to consider and ask questions and um, and just if we choose to give an opinion or, or, you know, make a motion or something, but it seems to me that's a little vague right now. At least it feels vague to me.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm just wanting to start the conversation tonight. Um, uh, but all those videos are recorded of the meetings we've had with each of those towns, if you're watching to watch.
So, and so here's the way it would typically work on a public co, contract that, that, that has something of this sort. I mean, you would have to issue an RFP or an RFQ that would need it, needed to be apples to apples comparison from each of the communities and identify what is a priority for town rollout and by what year and what costs are going to be borne by the town. I mean, you're talking about developing an RF, RFP or an RFQ that's significantly complex. Uh, that's beyond the scope of what this board's able of doing. I, I would suggest, I mean, this is something that might need technical assistance from PVPC or a, um, if you truly want to go down that, what, down that road, if it, if the comparison values are so uh, different from these municipal uh, light companies that we, you can't make a decision. It seems like there needs to be a much bigger effort uh, done to, to put everybody on a level playing field and, and try to understand, you know, what is the overall, you know, what it's weighted in the overall best interest of the town.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and that's kind, kind of, you know, like I was saying, my second, second thought this week was uh, maybe this is, it's a good use of DLTA money uh, to have them spend that time and that research uh, to make that apples to apples comparison. Um, but it's early days, I think, for, for an MLP, you have to have two votes, you have to, two, two year, consecutive year votes. So we have our first year, which, which basically the town said, okay, we want to, we want to look into this. We're not committing to this, but we want to look into it. And uh, over the next year, we'll be refining the data, uh, and information from different vendors.
So has, ha, has anybody in, in town provided any, so let's say next week, or next week, yeah. Our next vote goes uh, goes well in the interest of, of putting up uh, light uh, municipal light company. How does the town's timing fall in with the overall plan and, and I mean, that's the biggest, biggest question. I wasn't sure if that's something the select board had provided any, any goals to meet, or is that still so broad?
I, I think that talking to the, to any of, any of these companies, they're, they're, they're ready to start to get engaged and do the studies they would need to do to move forward. Uh, if once we had received a vote and once we had uh, determined as a town would, which company would, where group we would be going with. So, um, I think they're just looking to see it progress as, as it would this year, get the second vote, then in the process of, of that, if we had, once we have the second vote, then we'd be recommend, get a recommendation to the select board of which uh, uh, partner to go with. And once that agreement has been established legally, then that partner can start doing their studies, the, like the, the poll counts, all this fun stuff.
Well, I wish I could tell you that we could help on this. I, I'd like to, if there's something we can do, but pretty much we deal with land use and I'm not quite sure that.
Yeah, it just seemed like a, like a, the, the planning board or planning for the town. I was thinking like, well, this is part of the planning. When I think about who's going to be working on implementing things like infrastructure improvements of, say, like if we ever get to have a septic or sewage system uh, in town.
It sounds like a project in for a city planner and we don't have one, or a town planner.
This is true, yeah.
It, the project, you know, where this law Where the select board, it's like, and it's very vague and infinities were just like, you know, task the ad hoc committee with. Probing it and doing more research on it, but I think if you're taking it finally to task, it would be good to look at. Programs, grants, etc. to partner with to putting it together to lead the cause because there really doesn't. I, from my point of view, there isn't currently a commission or a person that the town currently has that has. That experience or jurisdiction over that and it.
Yeah, you have a good point. We, you know, if we had a town planner. Yeah.
You know, a a project's partner to push it forward through the town.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it seems like we're not the first community to do this, so why don't we look into what other communities like?
Yep.
A copy there. I mean, this is why do we need to read? Rewrite the book, the process, or maybe someone should be responsible and. Reach out to one of these communities that was in charge of their rollout and see what they did and get their feedback, because to me, I feel like that's. That's there's a significant amount of lessons learned from that from that. Plan.
Yeah, I was going to encourage you to, you know. Contact Ken Comey at P V P C and ask him for some models that they have that they're aware of. To to help you, you know, in that process.
Thank you. That's good advice. Yeah.
Thanks, Dan. Anything else? Any comments? Paul or?
I just have one comment. I don't know if anyone knows, but um. The chair for the Board of Assessors passed. So. Yeah.
Really?
Yes.
Who is that person, Joy?
A David Arnold.
He passed away?
Dave Arnold, yeah. So. Our town is down not only an assessor. But the chair of our Board of Assessors unfortunately has passed, who was doing a lot for our town, so. Just so you know.
Wow, I just talked to him in December. Holy cow, that's too bad.
I feel like he was just at one of our select board meetings.
Already here, the director. For all the folks involved in that office, his family too.
When when did he pass away? Do I like there so?
I believe. I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the. I don't know, I feel like my entire. Email is just sad news of people passing away. It came from Ed who let us know. I think it was over the weekend to me. I think it was very recent.
It's too bad. Terribly sorry to hear that.
Yesterday, and I received till Monday, Monday. Yeah. Just so you guys know.
Thank you, Joey. I don't have anything else. I'll keep you posted on the next meeting. Once I hear from Richard. There's nothing coming in, I'll cancel, but if we can get some work done, I'd I'd rather go forward that way. And again, if you have anyone that's interested in filling the unexpired term of Sarah to send their cover letter and. Fill out an application. At Gibson's office. I have one warrant tonight. And it's for payment to me. And it's for twelve dollars and sixty cents, not a hundred and twenty six dollars, not twelve hundred and sixty dollars. Twelve dollars and sixty cents for postage for two public hearings of butter notices. Do I have a motion on that?
I think we should give Paul his twelve dollars and sixty seven cents. I I I see that. You know, there's some issues at his house. He needs some outside repair and various things, so let's cover that cost for him.
Now, was it twelve dollars? Was it twelve dollars and sixty seven cents?
Twelve, one, two, six, zero.
All right, just making sure. I'll second the motion.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call, Cindy.
Uh, yeah, just call me Brittany Spears, yes.
Yep. Yes.
Paul's there, no. No, I'm doing it. I'm doing it peacefully because I got in the habit. Last year of holding all these little things up and then doing it all at once and I found myself. With some receipts that were from the prior fiscal year that wasn't too kosher with the town accountant, so I says I better do it as I go along. So.
Hey, Paul, I have to say, do you ever hear from Larry Smith?
Uh, no, I haven't heard from Larry in quite a while.
Oh, because, believe it or not, I was in a rest area on the Cape. I mean, on on Route ninety going or coming from the Cape, that was in just a couple of months ago, September, actually, and. Lo and behold, there was Larry Smith and his wife. Yeah, he looked pretty good. It was nice to chat with him for about forty five seconds. It was very nice.
I graduated with Larry's wife. Barbara, nice lady.
Good. I moved to adjourn. What do you think?
What do you say? Okay, and I I just want to make one mention. If you can't make a meeting going forward until we get a another person, please let me know because. There's several times there's just three of us. And if we have any kind of a special permit or anything like that, we've got to have a majority. In some cases, we need a super majority, but. If you can't make the meeting. Because of personal reasons, let me know ahead of time because I'll reschedule the meeting or. The hearing or whatever it happens to be and just until such time as we get a full complement of folks again.
Hey, Paul, did you last for 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 this meeting, tonight's meeting, you sent out a. Meeting invite, right?
Yeah, Zoom invitation, yeah.
That was very, very helpful because that 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 goes in the calendar and. It's it's ingrained in in the.
Yeah, once I figured out how to do it, Paul, I've been doing that and I, you know, I also do it with the my town government, but I have been doing the the Zoom one. Taking advantage of that as well, so.
That's very helpful, yeah.
Good, good to know. Okay. Well, happy, healthy New Years to you all, your families, and take good care and we'll see you again soon.
You too.
Thank you.
Take care, Joy. Bye. Good night.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.